The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of Weyburn City Council held in the council chambers at 6:00 PM, Monday, September 11th, 2023. And the first thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting and strategic planning and priorities meeting held August 14th, 2023. Do you have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, your worship.
Second?
I'll second that motion, your worship.
Call the question. All in favor? Carry it. Additions to the agenda, Mr. C- Mr. Warren?
Thanks, your worship. No additions from administration tonight.
Council, any additions? And just before we go forward, I just want to say, yes, I didn't get an accent here as we have close-ups there. This is the result of the disease shingles, so that's a- I had never seen anyone before have it, but so now you know someone that's had it, and it does hurt. The public hearings and notices, there is no public hearings and notices. Tonight, we have two proclamations. The first one I would like to give is the proclamation of National Legion Week. Whereas National Legion Week is designed to educate visitors on the good work their local branch does in their community, reinforces the important role branches play in our shared mission to serve and support our veterans, as well as contribute to the wellbeing of so many communities. And whereas the Dominion Executive Committee approved the establishment of the first National Legion Week in 2023 to begin the third Sunday in September, is in honor of the Battle of Britain Day. And whereas this year, it also includes a salute to the RCMP veterans who celebrated the 50th anniversary, May 23rd, of the Royal Canadian Mounted Police. And whereas the Weyburn Legion encouraged citizens to go to the branch and visit the memorabilia currently on display as a reminder of the sacrifices our local veterans do and have done for our community and our country. Therefore, now I, Marcel Roy, Mayor of the City of Weyburn, do hereby proclaim September 17th to the 23rd, 2023, as National Legion Week in the city of Weyburn, and I urge all citizens to take part in events to celebrate this week. Tonight, we have representatives from the Legion, and we will take a picture over here.
Thank you, Mayor Roy and City Council. We're certainly pleased to have next week proclaimed National Legion Week, but today it's really significant because, as we may or may not be aware, today is 9/11. And this proclamation today also extends the best wishes to those that serve and many that lost their lives in 9/11, and those that continue to serve, be it in the military, be it in the RCMP, be it in the city police, or any other service personnel. So with that in mind, we salute them all, and we hope you join us on July, or sorry, thinking it's still summer, on September the 20th at 10:00 AM, we're going to have a memorabilia display set up, as well as some of our veterans who have served around the area, just in the branch for a meet and greet. So we encourage anybody to come along that has the time to take part in that. Thank you.
The next proclamation is Rail Safety Week. And if Abby, if you would, please come to the podium here and let you make a bit of statement afterwards here, if you are a city employee who does safety within the city. So I'll read the proclamation first, and then you can make some comments. Whereas Rail Safety Week is to be held across Canada from September 18th to the 24th, 2023. Whereas 232 rail crossings and trespassing incidents, 232 rail crossings and trespassing incidents occurred in Canada in 2022, resulting in 66 avoidable fatalities and 43 avoidable serious injuries. And whereas educating and informing the public about rail safety, reminding the public that railway rights away are private property, enhancing public awareness of the dangers associated with highway rail crossings, ensuring pedestrians and motorists are looking and listening on new railways and obeying established traffic laws will reduce the number of avoidable fatalities and injuries caused by incidents involving trains and citizens. And whereas Operation Lifesaver Canada is a public-private partnership whose aim is to work with the public, railway industry, governments, police services, media, and others to raise rail safety awareness. And whereas Operation Lifesaver Canada has requested City Council adopt this resolution in support of its ongoing efforts to raise awareness, save lives, and prevent injuries in communities, including our municipality. Therefore, I, Marcel Roy, Mayor of the City of Weyburn, do hereby proclaim the week of September 18th to the 24th, 2023, to be Rail Safety Week in the city of Weyburn. I guess we can- Would you like to wish to say a couple of words?
I would just say that Weyburn, as a city, we have partnered with the lifesaving organization, and we will be putting up some signage on our roads, kicking off in the next couple of days, just to get pedestrians to look up and pay attention that there's going to be railway signs. So we have five, I think, major railway crossings going through the city, and so I think this is a really important initiative for us. And so I think our public works crews will be doing that, hopefully, the end of this week, and we hope that it brings some light and information to some of the, even the younger kids that may be not knowing what the, you know, hazards and dangers that come with railway crossings. And so, yeah, we appreciate you doing this.
Thank you. Just pass it. Or you will take it. Yes, Paul. Take one. Oh, consent agenda first. Do you have a motion to accept the tax activity report for July and the building department report for August?
Your worship, I move that the items on the consent agenda be accepted as presented.
I can second that, your worship.
Questions? Call the question. All in favor? Carry it unanimously. Motions, accounts payable, if you would, please.
Your worship, I'll make a motion that the purchase is in the amount of $1,374,854.59 from August 1st, 2023 to August 31st, 2023, be passed for payment.
Worship, I'll second that motion.
Questions? Hearing none, seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Carry it unanimously. Development Officer appointment, Mr. Warren?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. We just recently had departure of Janine Fletcher. I'd like to wish her all the best in her future endeavors, and I'd like to thank her for her time when she did work for the city. It is a responsibility for the municipality to have a development officer appointed. Back when I was the acting city manager in 2018, we did that, but it's always best that we refresh that. Now, we don't have a development officer in place, so we're just looking for a resolution from council to appoint me as the development officer.
Your worship, I would move that the city manager be appointed as the development officer for the city of Weyburn as per section 3.1.2B of City of Weyburn Zoning Bylaw 2020-3412.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Questions? I guess just one question. We're ongoing, it's moving along, are there- you've got the applications out for replacement?
Yes, your worship. So the posting has been posted. We have had received inquiries about the position, and we'll work towards having that filled as soon as possible.
Call the question. All in favor? Carry it unanimously. City manager, if you were warned, if you would give us the 2024 budget timelines.
Thanks, your worship. So the city of Weyburn has a policy establishing the guidelines responsibilities for an annual budget process, so that's Resolution 2017-12C. The policy establishes key responsibilities and timelines for the budget process. So every year, council, myself, and our city staff work towards developing an annual budget. The budget serves as an outline for how our money will be spent and how it comes in to improve the city of Weyburn. As the city has limited a number of resources available, the budget helps in determining which objectives have the highest priority and will produce the greatest positive impacts back to the community. The city of Weyburn develops a balanced operating at capital budget to provide growth and sustainability today and into the future. A balanced budget means money spent must equal the money that is raised. To balance a budget, the city can either increase its revenues through property taxes and fees, or through reducing expenses and cost of services. The operating budget covers day-to-day spending on services such as recreation programs, garbage collection, parks maintenance, snow removal, and emergency services. The operating budget also includes yearly projects to improve city-owned infrastructure and to make Weyburn a safe, convenient, and livable community. The capital budget is a plan to purchase, build, maintain, repair, and replace assets, including our fleet, roads, water, and waste water systems, public buildings such as the recreation facilities, public works facilities, fire station, police station, and parks. There are several main sources of funding for each municipality. Budget initiatives can receive funding from a single source or from multiple different sources. So some of the sources that we do for some of our revenue is property taxes, rates and fees, grants, development charges, internal reserves, and then if we do external loans, debt, just like we did for the Great Union Sparks Center. To assist in the establishment of the 2024 budget, the following are proposed timelines. So on October 23rd, 2023, will be our prelim budget, which will be presented at open council. So I'll have each one of our departments present their budget. That was presented by myself, our department heads as well. The Director of Finance is to also develop the proposal report and provide impacts and summaries back to council. During the week of November 6th to 10th, we're looking at doing an open house. So we're looking at having an open house provide information, understanding, and discussion on the prelim 2024 municipal budget. These events will be designed to allow people to drop in, obtain information on the budget. The objective is to have people speak to council and to city staff. Also, we want to make sure that people familiarize themselves with our operations and be more informed of our intentions for the 2024 budget. To date, we have not determined the location or the dates for the open house. We'll work with council and the public on that. Open houses will be held during the week of November 6th to 10th. Advertisements on the details will be on our city website and sent through our Weyburn Alerts and our city notification system, which is three points. On November 27th of 2023, we'll have further discussion with council on budget. So we'll kind of discuss what input we've received from the public. There'll be an opportunity for delegations, that's individuals or organizations, to appear before council regarding the budget, and then more discussion and direction from council to administration for the budget. And then the plan is to have by December 11th of 2023, file a budget approval at the regular council meeting that date. So currently, we have a website set up, which is weyburn.ca/budget, and that will be updated throughout this process. It'll be used to provide budget information, including timelines we're discussing tonight, information on the open house, and then the preliminary budget after it's reported to council on October 23rd. For us, the really key is an open budget process, provide citizens opportunity to learn about the municipal budget, the budget process, and provide input on priorities and influence allocation of the public resources. Transparent and inclusive budgeting facilitates citizens' understanding of issues and government processes, ensures transparency and accountability, improves the quality of decisions made, and increases support of decisions made by council. So again, I just put a chart on here for you guys to go again to see that. Again, October 23rd would be the presentation of the prelim budget done by myself and the directors-in-chief. Again, November 6th to 10th would be an open house, and we'll get that location dates out as soon as possible to the public. November 27th, again, is presenting the input back and opportunity for delegations and further discussion, and then plan is for December 11th to have approval of the final budget. So I just recommend that city approve the budget timelines as presented.
Your worship, I make a motion to council accept the 2024 budget timelines as presented by the city manager.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Discussion.
Thank you, your worship. I just want to encourage members of the public, if you do happen to miss those open houses from November 6th to 10th, please reach out to council or anybody administration-wise. Our phone lines are always open because we really do want to hear what everyone thinks, how we should spend taxpayers' dollars, and we just really want to be a responsible council. So, thank you.
I'll- Go ahead.
Thanks, your worship. City manager, just to clarify, I think I understand this correctly. You talked earlier in your report about balanced budgets. The Municipalities Act, in fact, prohibits us from tabling a deficit budget. Is that correct?
That's correct.
We must table a balanced budget every year, correct?
That's correct.
Right. Thank you. Yep. And I would echo what Council Morissette said. I appreciate this increased attention to, A, getting public input, but B, also in the transparency process to the budget.
The- And just kind of in the prospect, you know, perspective to how the city of Weyburn is doing in comparison to a lot of other cities, because both Mr. Warren and I were at a mayor's meeting, meeting about the mayors in the province, but also listening on the radio, they were talking about the housing crisis because Prince Albert and all these others are talking about Regina Sausage, who talked about this stuff. They said Vancouver being in the housing crisis, though, one statement, they said the reason being is that places like Vancouver, it can cost upwards of $300,000 just for permits to build a house on there, which is- Weyburn is nothing like any of that type of stuff, and that's why we were basically, I guess, voted in the magazine, Cleanse Magazine or another magazine, as being one of the top cities. So this has come up for our budget process. We're here to listen, and we're trying to do the best we can at these times that we're in. Call the question. Everybody in favor? Carry it unanimously. The council appointment of board vacancies, Mr. Warren?
Yeah, with the new council I have next to me, Council Higgs, we have not set him up on for any city committees, so he's been kind of having a fun time right now, waiting to have those committees set for him. So we had a number of committees that Council Mickel was on, so I am recommending to council that we have Council Higgs add to the Airport Board, Employee Relations Committee, and the Doctor Recruitment Committee as well.
Thank you, your worship. I'm glad to keep Councilor Higgs out of trouble and make the motion that he be appointed to the following committees for the remainder of 2023, the Airport Board, the Employee Relations Committee, and Doctor Recruitment.
Worship, I'm happy to second that motion.
As Council Morissette said, this is till the end of 2023. We'll be making new appointments here shortly near the end of 2023. And with that, call the question. All in favor? Carry it unanimously. The next one that we wish to talk about is Director Wilkinson, if you would, please, the HVAC installation at the police station.
Water treatment plant.
Water treatment.
Water treatment. Thank you. The city of Weyburn's water treatment plant requires an upgraded heating, ventilation, and air conditioning HVAC system. Currently, there is only one exhaust fan in each plant, Plant 100 and Plant 200, and the existing HVAC system cannot maintain a minimum temperature of 18 degrees Celsius for general occupancy, which is a requirement for normal operating conditions, or an emergency temperature above five degrees during the peak winter season. The lack of ventilation and heating capacity have resulted in high humidity levels and high concentrations of chlorine in the water treatment plant, causing accelerated corrosion on mechanical and electrical equipment and inadequate working conditions for operational staff. AAAEC Limited was awarded the detailed custom design of a recommended upgraded HVAC system and procurement services for the supply, installation, and commissioning of the recommended upgrade. The 2023 budget has allocated $270,000 for the HVAC detailed design and upgrades. The engineering consulting and supply of the HVAC system utilized $118,153 of the budget, leaving $151,847 for the installation and commissioning of the system. AAAEC requested quotations of a total of six qualified contractors for the installation and commissioning of the HVAC system, which includes site development, concrete, architectural, instrumentation, electrical, mechanical piping, and structural components. A total of four quotes were submitted, as summarized below, and exclude tax, so we have four different. So AAAEC performed technical evaluations on all quotations submitted and provided a recommendation to the city of Weyburn. So Prairie Lightning Electric only submitted a bid for the electrical component of the installation, and Dawn's Plumbing and Heating submitted a bid for all the installation components except the electrical component. So both Dawn's Plumbing and Heating and Prairie Lightning Electric ranked the highest in the technical evaluation for those installation components. So it is recommended that the installation of the HVAC system of the water treatment plant be awarded to Dawn's Plumbing and Heating for $130,936.93, and the electrical work be awarded to Prairie Lightning Electric for $76,879. It is recommended that $55,695.93 overage be approved for this project. This overage would be covered within the water treatment plant budget by the dam repair project that was $124,420 under budget.
Do I have a motion, please?
Worship, I'll make the motion that the HVAC system at the water treatment requested for quotes of the supply installation be awarded to, recommended by the Director of Engineering, Dawn's Plumbing and Heating of Weyburn. Supply and installation, $130,936.93, and Prairie Lightning Electric, electrical work for installation of $76,879. All further, yeah, all further that the budget overage of $55,596.93 be covered under the water treatment plant budget by the dam repair project that was $124,420 under budget.
I'll second that, your worship.
Question? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Carry it unanimously. Introduction of bylaws. We have a zoning bylaw amendment at Towns Gate. City Manager Warren?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. So zoning bylaw amendment application from CIC Asset Management, Inc., has been received, which is requesting that properties located at 109127 Towns Gateway rezone to R2, which is residential semi-detached to R3, which is residential multi-housing. These changes are requested to reflect the intended permissions for the lands that were previously approved by council in 2013, but were not carried forward with the new 2020 zoning bylaw due to some clerical errors. The lands are in the corner of King Street and Fifth Avenue North. Towns Gate Development was intended to develop as a planned group of dwelling units with several townhouse blocks, although only two of the townhouse blocks have been built to date. So staff is included, 101 and 108. Towns Gateway as a part of the amendment, as the entire property is part of one condo plan, and the zoning needs to be consistent with the property as a parcel was developed as a planned group of townhouses through the condo plan and develop the development process. So this came to council on October the 14th for first reading, so that's first reading for bylaw 2023-3461. So public notice was sent out after the first reading, and cartons with the city's public notice policy. Notices were advertised August 23rd and 30th editions of the Weyburn Review, posted at City Hall and on city website. Additionally, neighborhood notices were mailed out to all property owners within 75 meter radius of the property. Notices were also provided to the District Plan Commission to give them an opportunity to provide comment. The commission had no objections to the amendment, and then there was no other responses received. So-
So prior to this second reading, there has to be a public hearing, so I'll advise that the public hearing for bylaw 2023-3461 is declared open, and invite any parties wishing to speak regarding this bylaw may do so at this time. Calling once. Calling twice. Calling three times. This is the- That was the last call for submissions, and then I declare that this the public hearing is closed. We can now pursue- Proceed with a second and third reading, if we wish. Council?
I'll make the motion, the bylaw 2023-3461, a bylaw to amend the zoning bylaw 2020-3412 for the purpose of rezoning the property of 101127 Towns Gateway inclusive from R2 residential semi-detached to R3 residential multi-housing, and be read a second time.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion. Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Carry it unanimously. Third reading?
That bylaw 2023-3461, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw 2020-3412 for the purpose of rezoning the property of 101127 Towns Gateway inclusive from R2 residential semi-detached to R3 residential multi-housing, be read a third time and passed.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion. Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Carry it unanimously. Building bylaw 2023-3462. Mr. Warren?
Thank you, your worship. Let's get to the report here. So the city of Weyburn currently has a building bylaw adopted on our Uniform Building and Accessibility Standards Act. In 2021, the UBEAS Act was replaced with Construction Codes Act, and therefore, the building bylaw and references therein needed to be updated. So Weyburn City Council approved the new building bylaw 2023-3456 at our February 13th, 2023 regular meeting. After that meeting, we submitted that bylaw for review to the Ministry of Government Relations. The bylaw was reviewed pursuant to the Construction's Code Act and the Building Codes Regulations in force January 1st, 2022. The review from the ministry found- The review from the ministry found that the building bylaw 2023 3456 did not comply with the Construction's Code Act and was not approved under Clause 17, 6B. So B is not approved, the bylaw, or appealed the bylaw if the minister is in opinion that the bylaw conflicts with the act or the regulations. So the ministry provided observations, recommendations to include in the review submission. Also, I had means with the Ministry of Government Relations, Buildings and Technical Standards Branch, and also included in the bylaw identified through those made changes throughout that process, and I do want to thank them. That was actually a great process to have them walk us through this process. We're one of the first cities to be going through this process as well. So I am recommending that the City of Waverne Council provide first reading for bylaw 2023 3462, and then direct administration to bring the bylaw back for second and third readings at future meetings.
Thank you, worship. I'll make the motion that the bylaw 2023 3462, the building bylaw for the City of Waverne be read for a first time.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Carrie Denham. And this will be set aside to be read for a second, third time at a later date. How soon, Mr. Warren? Next council meeting?
Yeah, well, I want to put some notice out before that, so it might be a couple of means away from that.
Couple of ways, yes, right, okay. Moving forward, City Manager, again, official community plan bylaw amendment.
Pretty good, your worship. So zoning bylaw amendment application and corresponding OCP amendment application has been submitted by Brett Anderson. Amendment is to allow for the subdivision and development of a commercial shop, which will be consistent with the zoning of 1451 First Avenue Northwest, which is a highway commercial zone. The property is currently under a subdivision application, which will create the parcel as a commercial shop. The proposed parcel is parcel eight, Plan 101435688, and the city was a city-owned property that we recently sold to Mr. Anderson. So if council proceeds with first reading, bylaws 2023 3463 and 2023 3464 at this meeting, then we'll go in accordance to public notice policy, and then we'll have this brought back on October 10th at a record council meeting. So the proposal from Brett Anderson is to build a commercial shop on parcel eight. The APK is proposing to subdivide the existing commercial land on the west side of 1451 First Avenue from a caretaker's unit on the east side, and the additional land they purchased in the city would become part of the caretaker's unit property to allow for a new commercial shop to be built behind the house. The OCP and zoning amendments are required to facilitate development of the subject property, as it's currently zoned as a parks, open space, and recreation, which does not allow for a commercial shop. So we have a picture of the said subject property. Star shows location, where that'd be located, and also shows where parcel A is and where the proposed shop is on the land. So again, the property has a parks and open space land use designation. The APK is requesting that the lands be designated highway commercial on the land designation map on the OCP. The purpose of this designation is to provide highway commercial lands to businesses that require highway access. So also, within the zoning bylaw, the property is currently zoned as a parks and open spaces and recreation. The APK has requested the land be rezoned to highway commercial, which allows for a custom workshop as permitted use. So if council does give first reading of both of these bylaws, then we'll have this provided to the District Plan Commission for their input. Also, official community plan amendments must be approved by the Ministry of Government Relations after the final reading of bylaw 2023 3463, that will be submitted to the province for ministerial approval. Both bylaws will take effect upon ministerial approval. So got a couple of options here for council tonight. So option one is to give a first reading for bylaw 2023 3463, a bylaw being a bylaw to amend the official community plan to designate the above-mentioned lands as highway commercial on the future lands use and the land use designation maps. Also, council gives first reading to bylaw 2023 3464, being a bylaw to amend the zoning bylaw to rezone the aforementioned lands from parks, open spaces, and recreation zone to highway commercial zone. And then council also directs the administration advertise bylaws 2023 3463 and 2023 3464 as per the public notice policy. Option two is to refuse, is to refuse to give first reading for both bylaws, and then to direct administration to advise the APK of the refusal and the reasons why for the refusal. So staff recommendation is to move forward with option one, to give first reading for both bylaws tonight.
Do you have a motion, please?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. I'll make a motion that bylaw 2023 3463, a bylaw to amend bylaw 2020 3411, the official community plan, for the purpose of amending the land use designation for the property of 1451 First Avenue Northwest from parks and open spaces to highway commercial, that that be read a first time, and that staff be directed to advertise bylaw 2023 3463 as per the public notice policy.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Discussion? Was this the property that we just sold him?
That's correct.
No further discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Carrie Denham. So that will be set aside for public notice. The last one, 2023 3464 zoning bylaw amendment.
I just went through the report. Just need a first reading for that.
Because they have a C and D here, so I wasn't sure whether there is.
Two, two different bylaw amendments, so you have to do one for the OCP and one for the zoning.
And did you, so now we'll have a motion for the zoning, please?
Your worship, I would move that bylaw 2023 3464, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw 2020 3412, for the purpose of rezoning the property described as parcel eight, Plan 101435688, from parks and open spaces to highway commercial, be read a first time, and that staff be directed to advertise bylaw 2023 3464 as per the public notice policy.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Carrie Denham. No unfinished business, new business. City Manager, discretionary use permit 2023 019.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. So before I start, just so council knows, there's members from the Labor and Humane Society here, so if there's any questions after I go through my report, please feel free to direct them to, to the members of the committee or to myself. So discretionary use development permit application has been received from Labor and Humane Society for construction of a new animal shelter at 1810 East Avenue. So we had neighborhood notices provide to all property owners within 150-meter radius of the subject property, which notifies them of the application, the opportunity to provide their concerns and feedback to council. So notices were sent out on August 3rd, 2023, and the response deadline was August 25th, 2023 at noon. Notices were also provided to the District Plan Commission to give them an opportunity to provide comments back towards that. So discretionary use permits require approval from council on their zoning bylaw 2020 3412. The medium industrial zone intended to provide a wide range of industrial uses that carry out some of their operations outdoor and may require a higher percentage of outdoor storage and activities, but not of an obnoxious or offensive nature. The medium industrial zone allows for animal shelters as discretionary use. The Labor and Humane Society is currently located on city-owned land. It's the same property as our Public Works and our Fire Hall on 16th Street. The proposal provided by the Labor and Humane Society is for the construction of a new animal shelter. The building is approximately 5,400 square feet, and will have an outdoor play areas and kennels for their animals. So I did mention before, we had a note sent out, and the Waverne District Plan Commission had no objection, and it did provide a letter, which is attached. Staff also received one response, and that letter is attached as well to the public notice that was sent out. The letter was provided by a property owner with concerns about noise levels, as are several provincial government employees working at their property at a nearby location. I have stated here that the city administration will work with the Labor and Humane Society to mitigate concerns around noise through their site plan. So again, we have figure one, which are separate property. And then we have a site plan, which lays out what they have planned within, for their structure moving forward. So I provide three options for council tonight. So option one is to approve development permit 2023 19 for the construction of an animal shelter at 1810 East Avenue without further conditions. Option two is to approve the development permit for the construction with the following conditions: The development shall generally be consistent with the application and plans submitted, including landscaping plans, surfacing plans, and grading and drainage plans. A minimum of six off-street parking spaces shall be provided on-site for the animal shelter in accordance with Section 4.6 of the zoning bylaw 2020 3412. Parking areas must be maintained as dust-free, gravelled, and/or hard-surface area, and a building permit shall be required. Then option three is to refuse the development permit, and then we have to provide reasons why that has been refused. So staff is recommending that we move forward with option two to approve discretionary use permit 2023 19 with the conditions listed above.
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that discretionary use permit 2023.019 for the construction of a new animal shelter at 1810 East Avenue be approved subject to the recommended conditions per option number two.
Your worship, I will second that motion.
Discussion?
Thanks, your worship. City Manager, and also folks in the Humane Society, I know that you'll take seriously the commitment to our neighbors out there about working to keep the noise at an acceptable level, so I appreciate that. That out of the way, this is very exciting times, so charge ahead. Thank you very much.
Well?
Yes, yeah, congratulations on getting this far. I am curious to know, like, what some of the methods to keep the sound down are going to be, and like, is there dogs that are outside during the day, I'm going to guess?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
There's animals outside during the day, so I'm just wondering what, what can be done to mitigate the noise?
Well, the kennels for the animals when they're outside will be situated on the south side of the building primarily and on the east side. So like, they won't be facing the residential areas? And that's the reason, as you saw in the diagram, we have, there's trees.
Yeah.
We're planning on landscaping it, to both give the animals some shelter and as a, hopefully, a noise breaker.
So are you thinking you'll be able to get, like, some larger trees in there anyway, so they grow faster, because it's still?
Yeah. And normally, our animals are in by 7:00, 7:30.
Yeah. I'm more concerned about the office space, I guess, that are working during the day, I guess.
I'm sorry, sorry.
I'd say I'm more concerned about the office space next door that where the people are working during the day.
Yeah. Well, there is a lot to call it that between us and that, that building.
Okay, yeah.
So I could somewhat, I couldn't tell you the exact size of it.
Right, yeah.
But there is, there is a space.
Yeah. I just, I just hope, like Counselor Richard said, that that is taken seriously, that consideration of some way to mitigate that, that sound from crossing over, because a 100-feet lot isn't a lot of space to.
Yeah. Well, as in the diagram, you can see there's, on the lower right corner, there's a building that we're hoping to be storage, garage, et cetera. So that'll, that'll be some of a noise break to the building beside it, and also hopefully, again, the trees and everything that'll be situated there will, you won't be able to get totally noise-free.
No, no, I understand.
Hopefully, it'll give enough that it won't bother our neighbors.
I just think if it does bother neighbors, then maybe a plan has to be in place to help mitigate it even further. I'm not sure what that would be, but.
Yeah, I honestly, I don't know, like, like said, we, presently, our animals, we generally do, you know, except during the summer, we kept some animals out, but I'm, I'm not sure how you can make dogs quieter, but.
Yeah, but you look at coming into Regina on the east, from the east side, they've got walls, cement walls up as noise breakers for the highway residential, those that would be, I'm quite sure if you talk to engineering, there's a variety of ways of breaking, breaking the noise to the neighborhood, because, again, I, although why people haven't, didn't see that notice to send in letters, more letters, there's other residents, a couple of other residents, so there's a lot of residential people that, again, people are reluctant to complain. They won't complain to council, but they won't send forward complaints about the noise as there. So there's, as, if there is, just be aware that you're going to be, you'll probably be back to saying, and I don't know whether we can pass this without an amendment onto there, or pass it with the saying that if there are noise complaints, you're going to have to upgrade to deal with that. Mr. Warren?
So your worship, so you're looking at some development plans they have to provide to you, so they have to plan, provide plans for that, that site, right? And so we have to approve that as administration as we go through that process, right? So if there's some conditions you guys want to see for additional noise barriers, like concrete walls, trees, and stuff like that, you can have that as a request that we state when we get those plans from them, that they have to put that in place.
I, I think there should be something that, that is, because people said that, the one person that talked to me said they can hear the dogs from over where they are now, let alone being right behind the residential. And so, and as you know, we had complaints about the mergul property and the residential stuff, and there was, because of past non, not having the permits written right in the past, there was nothing we could do about it, so I'd probably like to say that we would have to have something in there showing what the hell, some noise mitigation of some sort, because the residents were there. And, and again, although, although you do provide a great service, it's, you're the neighbor moving in, and we have to make sure that, that the rest of the people that have been there for years are not going to be the ones.
Like, one thing, like, you said there is, people could hear the dogs when they're barking. If you're ever there when they are barking, generally, there is somebody driving past the building, like, from the city works, you know, or down the highway and all this, but now we'll be off of the main street with minimal traffic.
No, but still, at the same time, there has to be noise blockers.
Yeah. We'll do everything we possibly can.
No, but I'm saying that it has to be a part of the plans.
Well, you could add a part of the, the option, you can add within the conditions that they have to put noise mitigations a part of that, that's something you guys can add towards that.
I would, I would like to see that.
Yeah, and maybe, you know, I think probably the office building is one that concerns me the most, I think, because I think, like, the residential is a fair ways away, and hopefully, that's not an issue, but, you know, you may be able to talk to that property owner also, because it is his responsibility to keep noise. You know, maybe between the two of you, you can figure out whether you both need to put a fence up or something like that.
Yeah. One option we have, like, that diagram we gave you is kind of, it was our preliminary drawings, and we're still working with the engineers on this. One idea we've had is, if you take the, the kennels that are on the right-hand side, and we're thinking of moving it on to the left in the upper side, so there won't be any kennels on that right-hand side at all, so that, that will dampen, and the dogs will be facing into the building.
But I think there's, I still think that there should be something in there that says you have to show noise mitigation design.
If I might, your worship, I think sometimes we, we hear terms like noise mitigation, and we think that immediately means a structure of sorts. You guys are, you guys run a shelter now, you understand what it takes to keep the animals quiet, maybe that's rotating them in and out and doing things like that. If you have one dog that's particularly noisy, perhaps he only goes out in the evenings, things like that, right? I think you guys know what you're doing. Noise mitigation doesn't always have to be a structure, it can also be a practice.
Yeah.
And I think what we're asking is that you work very closely with administration and your neighbors on that practice, I think.
Oh, we will, and like I said, like I said, usually, the main purpose or cause of our dogs barking is that somebody's going past, you know, and they see them, and right away, like any, like any dogs, you know, they're going to bark. But when there's not vehicles going past. But when there's not vehicles going past, their noise is minimal for barking.
But I'd like to see it written in there, because as you saw, as you know, it gets down to, in next councils coming forward, it's no, he said, she said, that. If it's not in writing, let's have it in writing onto that.
Yeah, we're more than willing to work, considering anything we can do to make it better.
Sure.
Thanks, your worship, to the city manager. Now, the humane society would still have to fall within all of the parameters of our noise bylaw as well. So regardless of what was happening in my house, if I was receiving complaints from my neighbors about the noise, which I don't, but if I did, it would be the same thing for me, right? So if I had one dog that was just barking all day long, I would still be in violation of the noise bylaw, and much the same would be for the humane society.
That's correct, Counsel Richard. So part of the notice of approval, we actually do put that in there as well, so we'll actually state that they have to follow the noise bylaw, which is from 7 till 11:00. That's a standard that we have to follow throughout the whole municipality.
Thank you.
But again, the 7 till 11:00 is not, is not, to me, wow, to me, I would like to see that you show some design of, like you say, show us a design that you're showing noise mitigation, and that you're going to do something.
So I'll answer that question. So what happens is, from 7 to 11:00, is that normal operations, where if anything's louder than normal, that breaks the bylaw, but quiet time is from after 11:00 all the way till 7:00 AM.
Sorry, your worship, I'm out of order here, but that bylaw can be enforced at 2:00 in the afternoon as well.
That's correct.
Anyway, the, all I'm asking is that there be something additional line in there of saying that you're looking at noise mitigation, or drawings to show that there is noise, that they've done something towards to mitigate the noise then.
Okay.
And a part of the building permit shall be required.
Out of curiosity, the entire area will be fenced in, with something like those, I call them those plastic slats, would that be considered something that would help reduce it, or?
Again, there's an engineering has to do, because I just show you that, I just tell you that, you know, you look at the highway coming in from Regina, they got that brick wall, and it's bouncing noise, so it keeps the noise within the compound on there.
Right, there's lots of options that we can talk about, and that doesn't have to be decided tonight, there's lots of options that you can look at, and we can work with the change.
No, I'm not saying you have to do...
Oh, no, oh, no, I'm just...
I'm just saying that as you're doing your design, like you're saying, you're showing that there is, you're showing that there is mitigation, noise mitigation attempted here.
Your worship, if I may, I think at this point, all we really need to have is an understanding that efforts are going to be made to make sure the noise bylaw is respected and minimal disruption for the surrounding businesses, which I believe we have. I mean, I don't know if we need to get into specifics right now.
All right, because I do know how loose our noise bylaw is, and I have phoned about dogs, and there's nothing gets done, because it is, they just go, their bylaw is useless on this, trying to stop them. And that becomes a great problem with barking dogs, and barking dogs drive people nuts. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I just want to say thank you to the group for your willingness to accommodate all of the requirements that the city is presenting to you guys, and I wish you luck with this. I'm so excited to have a new shelter in town. I've been in the old one a few times, and I'm really, really looking forward to a new one.
Okay. Your honor, I'm sorry, are there any other questions?
No.
So, I hadn't planned on doing this, can I just make a brief statement about the building?
Okay.
Okay. Recently, I've had a few people from the public approach me that they heard a story that our building was being bought in the States, and that is totally, totally untrue. The company we're buying it from is called Goodon, I can never say it right, they're based in Manitoba, they use Saskatchewan workers. So our building is not coming from the States. As near as I can figure, there was a misunderstanding when we were talking about the kennels that we were going to purchase. Those we had to look in the States, because there is no company in Canada that builds them, and those are based in the States. So I'm assuming that that's probably what happened, is two stories got crossed. But just to reassure the public, the building is coming from Canada, it is nothing American about it. Okay, thank you.
And then again, nothing against there, I just want to see something in writing, but if the rest of the council doesn't, I will vote against it, pre-cobide on the idea of the way it's written right now, is there's nothing that is in writing about noise mitigation. And if the rest of the council feels that they can approve it with the bylaw, which I don't think is, is strong enough into there about noise, I will, but I will still vote against the way it is, and it's nothing against you guys, it's just about the neighbors that are there already, the proprietors that are there already.
Yeah, I don't totally disagree with you, your worship, and, you know, I don't think it hurts to put in there something, just a form of noise mitigation be shown on the plans, just so that we know that it's a concern, and it doesn't, you know, we're not putting it down to specifics or anything, but just so that we know that it's an issue, and that way, we all, that's five years from now, if it comes up and none of us are here, then...
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, is that it's for the future councils too, that know that we were thinking, we're talking about this, and it was a...
I would make that amendment if it...
Seconder, do you approve the amendment?
I'll second that, your worship.
So we'll need to pass the amendment first, and then the motion with the addition.
Call the question, all in favor of the amendment?
Can we have discussion before we vote?
Oh, before, sorry.
Your worship, I question whether this is entirely necessary. If there's an issue with our noise bylaw, that's on us, we shouldn't be risking forcing amendments onto other permits based on deficiencies in our own bylaws. That should be dealt with separately. I don't want to risk delaying this project based on something that has nothing to do with this project in particular, other than the fact that dog shelters have barking dogs.
I agree with this, but until that's such time as, and you know how bylaws, to amend and to go through, there becomes a lot of stuff, and we want this to go forward, we want the shelter to go forward, so we just want to make sure that this is a part of it.
So we do want this to go forward, your worship, and if this doesn't go forward, we might find our place, our city in a place where we've got barking dogs, and we have no place to put them. I feel like we have kind of got the issue by the tail when we need to be taken by the head here.
Cool. Don?
Thank you, your worship, appreciate that. I don't see this as an issue regarding the bylaw, I see it just as a structural aspect of the plan. It comes forward, it'll be part of the process attaining the building permit, and just specifying that there needs to be some sort of noise mitigation in the construction of the facility. That's how I interpret this.
Look, I'll support the amendment, because I think the wording itself, in and of itself, is rather benign, it's just an acknowledgement that it has been discussed to alleviate stress down the road, so I can support the amendment. I think, you know, some trees, it looks like some fence line on the neighboring side there is already in place, arguably, that is noise mitigation, so I can support the amendment, I think, if this is what it takes to get to the project rolling.
Your worship and Counselor Richards, if it's already in place in the drawings, then what are we asking for?
Me? Because what I'm asking today is to say, if there's other engineered things that should be done, be it fencing, be it somewhere, because already, there's concerns being addressed, and we could hold it up and ask for public hearings on this type of stuff, if you wish.
If I might, your worship, again, I think you're 100% right, Counsel Jenke, the noise mitigation, construction-wise, is already illustrated through fence and trees. I think maybe the goal here is to acknowledge that it might not be enough, and that down the road, it may need to be addressed. I'm with you, I think that should be part of the noise bylaw, I just want to get this approved tonight, so that's why I'm willing to accept that amendment, right, wrong, or otherwise, very well.
Any further discussion? Call the question on the amendment, all in favor? Opposed? Opposed. So with, even with one opposed, are we able to make the amendment? Then, if we could, the amendment would be placed under which line? Mr. Warren?
Under... Sorry, your worship, I'll put underneath number A, because we were talking about plans within that, it'll be a mitigation plan, a part of that, so it'll state is that development shall generally be consistent with the application and plan submitted, including landscaping plans, surfacing plans, grading, grading and drainage plans, and then noise mitigation plans.
With that, call the question, approval of that, number two, all in favor? There was a motion? Yes. Passed unanimously. So it's there. The next one is discretionary use permit, Big Jim's Brew Shop, city manager Warren?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. So tonight, we do have the applicant here, so Todd Bedore is here, so if you guys do have any questions, please ask Mr. Bedore to come to the podium, and he can speak towards this, and I can answer questions as required as well. So we have a discretionary use development permit application from Big Jim's Brew Shop for installation of a seasonal patio within the parking lane of the street right of way in front of 51 Third Street Northeast. So we had neighborhood notices sent out and provide to all property owners within a 75 meter radius of the subject property, which notifies them, the application, and opt to provide their concerns and feedback back to council. So notices were sent out on August 15, 2023, with no responses received within the deadline of August 30 of 2023 at noon. So discretionary use developments require approval of council under Zonby Law 2020-3412. The central business district is designed to provide the most intensive areas of retail, service, and commercial development. The proposal received from Big Jim's Brew Shop includes installation of a seasonal patio within the parking lane of the street right of way in front of 51 Third Street. The patio will be approximately eight feet wide by 24 feet, and will have 42-inch railings on the three sides, so north, south, and east. The patio will have seating that'll be used for customers to enjoy non-alcoholic beverages and treats. The patio will be removable, and the operation seasons will be from May 1st to September 30th each year. So we got a location of the subject property, and then a nice little drawing of where the patio will be located outside the building. So I got some options here in front of council, so option one is to approve development permit 2023-20 for installation of a seasonal patio within the parking lane of the street right of way in front of 51 Third Street Northeast without further conditions. Option two is to approve the development permit with the following conditions: So the annual approval period is from May 1st to September 30th, the site is to be cleared for use as a park install outside of that period, an annual review meeting in October will occur between the applicant and the development officer or their designate, all utility, infrastructure, and site work undertaken and/or required to be undertaken on the site should be completed and maintained at the sole cost and responsibility of the applicant, the proposed structures be fully constructed prior to relocation to that site, the applicant is responsible for maintaining the site and areas surrounding the site in good condition at all times, and I would refuse containers shall be provided on the patio, any damage as a result of activities provided to the existing municipal infrastructure such as sidewalks, signage, roadways, or utilities shall be repaired at the applicant's expense, the storm ward drainage graded in the southwest corner of the proposed site shall be accessible for maintenance to access that, no portion of the patio other than the support block shall be lower in elevation than the top of the curb, no support blocks can be closer than 0.3 meters from the curb, to facilitate pedestrian movements, the sidewalk shall be free of obstructions to the width of 1.8 meters, concrete barriers shall be erected on the east and north corners of the site to the satisfaction of the city Weyburn Transportation Department. The applicant is not authorized to drill, excavate, or modify the sidewalks, curb, and pavement without express written permission from the city Weyburn Engineering Department. The city may require temporary removal of the structure from the roadway curb and sidewalk should they need access prior to September 30th for any reason. The north boundary of the patio shall be no closer than 14 centimeters to the outer edge of the park install. Installation of the structure must be coordinated with the city Weyburn Transportation Department. The business shall operate in compliance with the city Weyburn Noise Bylaw 2004-3027, and the owner shall provide written confirmation of carriage of a minimum of $2 million liability insurance package for the operation of the seasonal patio. So then option three is to refuse, if there is a refusal for this application, let's provide that back to the applicant. So staff recommendation is to move forward with option two to approve discretionary use development permits for 2023-20 with conditions listed above.
Do I have a more, please?
Your worship, I would move that discretionary use permit 2023.020 for the installation of a seasonal patio within the parking lane of the street right of way in front of 51 Third Street be approved with the recommended conditions as presented.
I can second that, your worship.
I just want to say that although I am right next door, building right next door to it, I see no conflict of interest, because I'm thinking only of this as being a good project for what we've discussed so much in council, the downtown revitalization, and as moving, you know, something to give kind of inspiration, to show nice, and we see it in other cities, it's seen in Calgary, it's seen in Aspen, these are, it's not like this is something new for many of the other ones, so I like to say that this is very good to see, and I would hope other businesses look towards this too. Other discussion? Mr. Richards? Or Mr. Corgan? Thank you. Your worship?
Mr. Bedore, I think this is a great idea, I think it's a long time coming within the community to move forward with something like this, I think it's a big step in moving forward with revitalization of downtown. With that said, change is always difficult, and people don't always react well to it, and in this particular case, where you're planning on putting the patio, of course, is taking away some parking. How have you thought about how you're going to respond to your clientele, or other people's, other businesses' clientele, as to the answers that you can provide for their concerns regarding that?
Yeah, thank you for your question. You know, we have parking, ample parking in the back of our buildings, and also, you know, the notice went out to all the business owners, and that was one of my big concerns, is are the business owners going to be against this with a parking spot? I did my due diligence, talked to all the business owners, and, you know, outside of Weyburn, Saskatchewan, and all the other big cities, you got to walk sometimes, and that's okay, and it's going to be one parking spot, and we're going to, maybe one and a half, and we're going to have some fun up there.
Excellent. May I continue, your worship? And again, I think this is great, and I think that once you get this established, I can see it propagating down the street.
Yeah.
And this is more of a question for city manager, is do we really have, do we have a plan in place to address all the possibilities that may come forward to us? Because I see this expanding, I mean, right now, you're proposing, you know, non-alcoholic beverages and treats, but in other communities, where I've seen these sorts of situations arise, it's restaurants and bars that do serve in those particular kind of patio situations, and I'm just wondering, and who knows what else may come forward with, what other ideas might come forward, I'm just wondering, where are we in moving forward with a plan to be more reactive, or more proactive instead of reactive?
Yeah, thanks, Counsel Corgan. So with this application, it did make us dig deep, and to review a lot more what other municipalities are doing. other municipalities are doing, you know, as, as this is going to be something that will be put in place for, for next year. There's some work that I've actually started thinking about within strategic priorities that we have to start looking at, develop some plans to have a really deep discussion with engineering and with our planning departments about, you know, how this works and how do we deal with other applications? Because there is concerns which were brought by, by council tonight about parking. And I really think that it has to be more of a review of, of how that works and, and really develop a plan moving forward. Because right now, if we did receive a lot of other applications, we don't know how this would work. And, and I really do appreciate the comment being reactive. We never want to be reactive. We want to be a lot more proactive with this. We couldn't be because it's, it's kind of in the way of something we want to help this, this business move forward with that. But I really think that I have listed it as a priority for us moving forward in our 2024 priorities that I'll be asking the engineering department and the planning department to review a lot more closer to see, because I do see additional applications coming through. Mayor Roy just did mention that Estevan had one, so two years ago Estevan approved a similar request. That was a trial basis, a trial still occurring. They have not removed that. They haven't had more applicants, but they have that one applicant that way. But I think there's a lot more work that we have to do administratively to plan moving forward.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Your Worship. Todd, this is a fantastic idea. I'm really looking forward to it, but staying in the proactive stance, do you plan to shut the patio down in your off hours? And are you going, do you have a way to keep people off of it when you're not using it?
So the goal is to have fixed furniture so we don't have to move stuff in and out. And we were looking at closing it off. Now, that is not, not always possible, you know, but there, there's going to be some access from the sidewalk, whether it's a lock gate, but if someone really wants to jump in there and hang out, they're going to, they're going to get in there.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Van Betchu?
Thanks, Todd. I think it's a great idea. Also, my, my concern, and I don't know how, if it, if it's a legitimate concern, is traffic on the street and I don't know if there was a medical incident and somebody veered off into that, that area. So I don't know, I just thinking about, I don't know if there's any way you can mitigate that, but it just seems like if you have people out in that parking stall, they're much more at risk than if they're on the sidewalk.
So one of the plans there is to have the concrete barricades on all sides of it. So if something were to happen, they would hit the concrete barricade.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah, Counselor Van Betchu, that's one of the conditions to be put in place. Because that was a concern from administration about what would happen. And that's just not in the street, but it's in the parking stall to make sure that's put in place. We actually put that as a condition that.
Obviously, I didn't read enough.
Okay.
Mr. Richards?
Todd, I applaud you for taking this on. This is a great idea and I think we all very much appreciate all the hard work and due diligence. You did talk into the neighbors. Did you have any positive feedback? As to Counselor Corrigan's point, I think there is an opportunity for this to extend and kind of move down the street. Did you get any feeling that anybody's thinking that way or?
So there's a reason I wanted to be first. First of all, to, to be a little bit of a guinea pig and, and figure this out because I, I truly believe if this is a success, we're going to be, we're going to have two or three or four of these downtown. You know, with, with the business owners downtown, what I found is they're just looking for more traffic. And more traffic equals whether, whether they stop at our store and grab something or they stop next door or next door, we're all willing to share that dollar. So that's something we're working as, as a group collaboratively, trying to build that culture downtown to where, where it's a place to hang out and spend and then also bring some money in from outside of town.
Excellent, thank you.
With that, call the question, all in favor? Attorney General Anderson, good luck.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank, to thank everybody who worked through this, the administration. It was a, it was a pretty easy project. It only took about three or four weeks to get this through and look forward to seeing it in spring with a new deck.
Director Wilkinson, rural water hookup requests?
Yes, please do. Thank you. The Waburn Utility Board has requested approval to hook up one new commercial water service. So the owners have confirmed satisfactory sewage disposal arrangements. The commercial water service is for a seed cleaning business. Based on estimated demand, we are able to handle the additional requirements on our water system. So it is recommended that the following requests be approved for commercial water service to Don Hemp Hill, Lot 2, Block 2, Evanston Park, and the $25,000 connection fee does apply to this commercial application.
Do you have a motion, please?
Worship, I move that the request of the Waburn Utility Board for access to the rural pipeline in the following application be approved, subject to fulfilling the city of Waburn and the Waburn Utility Board residential water hookup recommendation, I'm sorry, requirements, not recommendations. Don Hemp Hill, Lot 2, Block 2, Evanston Park.
I'll second that motion, Your Worship.
Discussion? And again, there's a lot that is, again, the, there's always this discussion as to the pricing of it, but the, again, the pricing is because this is rural water hookup and there hasn't been city taxes paid towards our, our, our city infrastructure and its way of trying to mitigate fairness along the way. So this is where, where, we're working with this. So any other comments? Call the question, all in favor? Attorney General Anderson. Fire's announcements, anything? Mr. Richards?
Thanks, Your Worship. First off, good news all throughout the evening tonight. New Humane Society, the First Avenue Property, expansion of Big Jim's, now Rural Water stuff. This is exciting times, so that's very good to see. The announcement I want to make, though, is about youth council. Youth council applications are open now and those applications are on the city of Waburn website. So open to grade 10, 11, 12 students in the city of Waburn. I would encourage, if you have young people in your life who you think might be interested in that, I would encourage you to encourage them to get involved.
Yeah, Your Worship, I'd like to thank the public for, for them working with us for the opening of our Craigian Sparks Center, which happened today. And our Waburn Leadership Center will be open tomorrow. So we're really excited to have our users back for our fall and winter season. I don't want to talk that way because I still enjoy the plus 25 to plus 30 weather right now. But we do, are really excited to have everyone back at those facilities and really appreciate the patience that our, our users and our residents had during that time for us to get those operated for the fall and winter season.
Two things, a couple of things, I guess. Number one is that to your department and to all the, and to all the staff working within all this whole, the water and who are in the paving crews and everybody, there's, it was many comments I've received from people who said that they haven't seen as much construction here for years and the improvements. And I know that it's very stressful on the crews because of all the detours and the citizenry for all the detours, but I thank the citizens that because we've gotten, we're, we're doing tremendous amount of improvements and I thank your department for what you're doing and leading forward with all this and the plans that you've done and the plans for the future, what we're going to continue to do here in the city to continue on with improvements all the way through. And the second thing is that at our mayor, just a couple of things that came out at the mayor's meeting, we had quite a, Mr. Warren and I was giving a video team meeting, can't say Zoom, exists as teams, meeting that we had with mayors, all the city, the big city mayors. We had quite a compassionate talk by Mayor Gillum about the situation in Battleford and how things are. And again, Charter Clark and, and Mayor Masters from Regina joined in on the homeless and the indigenous and such. And even prior to that, I was reading about this calls to action, which I brought forward and they brought, filled in the blanks. So there's 2028, I just want to say 2000, because, and this, where I'm going with this is that we are erecting a, the flagpole's out here, Treaty 4 flag will be flying on one of the flagpoles. And 2008 to 2015, there was a study done and on the final report, very large report, I believe it can be even obtained at chapters, it's called the 94 Calls to Action, asking all Canadians and governments, all governments, municipal up for certain things. And one, and then even since then, only 12 have been completed since 2015, which is, and 20 not even started onto it. But a part of it is that, that all councillors and all municipal high level management take a, a training, this indigenous training of a basic call to action training, which I think that we will, I would, I will push forward and ask our city administration, and he's already looked at it, to look at this basic training of doing this, because this is one of the things that, so that we understand this whole, all the wrongs that have been done in direct and for reconciliation projects on there. So that is one of the things, because I don't feel, I feel that just flying the flag is not enough. We have to follow through these calls to actions and what we should do. And Zuma has said they were going to bring out a report in 2024. There are six things that municipalities are supposed to do and they're going to be presenting. And one is a blanket ceremony. I don't know if anybody's ever attended one. I attended one a few years back on that. And then all council members and manage, and high management within the city is one of the recommendations that they attend these things to. So that's one of the things. And then the other thing that was brought up, and there's some, some of us, Mr. Richards is probably more attuned to this, that Mayor Ludwig was talking about the small nuclear plants and the nuclear systems that are, the government has been talking about here lately. And it's, I encourage our citizens of Waburn to attend some of these, there's some open houses around about it. And I find it very interesting, I'll just use those words, that the, the, the Saskatchewan government fluctuates in what they're talking about. They're up to, they're started off at four, they're down to one, now they're up to about eight and there's some other larger ones. And so it's, but the, the direction is that it is going to be nuclear, that they're looking forward to move forward on it. And October 4th, there is going to be a supply management meeting in Regina that you can kind of look and get ahold of me if you want to, I've got a contact number for that. But there, the government, Saskatchewan government has asked anybody interested in supplying any of the, the materials for these nuclear plants to talk to the mining organization, supply, mining supply organization. And they're going to have a big conference in Regina all about this. On October 4th is going to be their meeting. So that is one of the things. And it's kind of quite interesting that we're going to be in this one area where they're, they're talking about this, these nuclear, small nuclear plants moving forward here. So that's, there's lots of stuff coming up for Waburn, I think, on the horizon. And they're still talking, as it was brought up at the mayor's meeting, that the premier is still talking of another 10 years boom of, of all the provinces, a very strong strength in Saskatchewan economy. Anybody else? So that's kind of a bit of the report from our whole Zuma mayor's meeting. Those are the important points. And I'm going to be going to another one in November, in person one up in Regina. I'll give you a report at that time afterwards. There's no notice of motions. And with that, I shall call adjournment to this meeting. Thank you all for attending.